Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order, Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals for January twenty-six, twenty-two. With a roll call of members. Chip Darbell.
Here.
Jim McBane.
Here.
Amy Wall.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Tom Lucy.
Here.
Michael Feely.
Here.
Greg McIntosh.
Here.
And Dave Hatfield is here. Okay. Amy, let's proceed to the legal notice, if you please.
Righty. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial and number. One, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two. Meeting ID nine, eight, six, four, zero, three, six, five, six, eight, six. Passcode nine, seven, one, four, six, six. Please use only dial-in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. Where am I? This meeting will be audio and video recorded in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. This location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in the alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disabilities coordinator, William Renaud, town engineer at seven, eight, one, two, four, six, six, three, zero, eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove any accessibility barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-two dash thirty-three, Christopher J. McShane and Nicole McShane. Application for a variance under Article ten, section one ninety dash sixty-six. Seeking a variance from the requirements of section one ninety dash twenty-two A, one F of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to the proposed accessory apartment. The property is shown as map fourteen B lot parcels N one zero, the assessors map, and is located at thirty-four Payon Boulevard. Three, twenty-two dash thirty-four Hobby Bunker Incorporated. Application for a special permit under Article sixteen, section one ninety dash one hundred D of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to add a bracket sign. The property is shown as map twelve lot parcels one four zero A of the assessors map and is located at one oh three Albion Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, as we usually do, we've received some correspondence to continue a couple hearings on our agenda. So we'll take those up first in case anyone is here for those specific hearings. Attorney Brian McGrail dated today, January twenty-six, twenty-two. Regarding Crescent Commons Development LLC, a property at forty-four, forty-six, and forty-eight Crescent Street, Wakefield. Permit, case number twenty-one dash thirty-seven. Requesting that we continue the meeting to our February ninth hearing to allow for continued meetings with the Board of Appeals Subcommittee in order to complete the drafting of a decision to be presented to the entire Board of Appeals for its consideration. The Subcommittee is continuing its work, having had two meetings since the last Board of Appeals meeting with another one scheduled for tomorrow.
I move that we continue this to our next meeting, February ninth.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, regular voting membership?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
You're on mute, Jim.
Thank you. He's off mute, and I see a hand wave. Okay. Joe, right? And I vote yes. Okay, so Crescent Commons, again, we expected this. I take a couple hearings. We'll hopefully see see draft decision and other materials on February ninth. Also from Attorney Brian McGrail, January twenty-six, twenty-two, regarding SGD Management Group LLC. Ninety-seven to ninety-nine Water Street, Wakefield. Case numbers twenty-one, forty-three, and forty-four. Requesting that we continue to February ninth. Finalizing conditions with the DBW as it relates to the proposed infrastructure improvements.
I move that we continue this to our February ninth hearing.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, regular voting membership?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay, so if anyone's here for that hearing, it'll be heard on February ninth. Our next continued hearing. Twenty-one, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, CCF Quinapower Property Company LLC. At two hundred to four hundred Quinapower Park.
Evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, Brian.
Members of the board. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, representing the applicant with me tonight on the Zoom call is Matt D'Amico from CCNF, who may be speaking tonight. And our main presenters are Brian O'Connor from Cube Three Architects and Ian Ramsey from Copley Wolf Landscape Design. Since our last meeting, our design team has been working incredibly hard on tonight's presentation that will focus on the following items that were specifically requested by the board last time we were before the board. And those are off-site views of the project and perspectives of the project from off-site in different angles, so perspective elevations, perspective renderings, perspective, I guess, you know, modeling that took place. You'll see some modeling aspects. It was a, it was a big endeavor. We hope that we're going to present the information that the board requested, and there's a lot of it and a lot of material that, that I'm sure Brian and Ian will walk you through. We also are going to go through more detailed building renderings in materials. Some different angles on the buildings than you've seen before, some different perspectives. There's going to be some detail on the amenity courtyard concepts. The board had asked for that to have a better understanding of how the common area amenity components of the project would fit and work. So you will see some detail on that presented tonight. And then materials and character that we'll also get into through our presentation. I am going to hand it over to Brian O'Connor and Ian Ramsey to make the presentation. But before I do, I do want to point out a few things. The views and perspectives that you are going to see tonight include and incorporate the proposed landscaping design in additions by Copley Wolf. And they also show the significant open area, conservation area that my client has committed to the Friends of Lake Quinapower. So might be somewhat of a dual, dual presentation. There might be certain slides that, that if we see it appropriate, that Brian will address the architecture and then Ian might touch on how some of these landscape improvements. But they're very realistic as far as how the landscaping is going to fit onto the site and the new pathway that's going to be constructed for public use in a lot of the public open area that's being, being proposed. We also, as part of this, we've revised our landscaping plan, so we will be updating that. And I want to point out that the new plan will include the addition of approximately two hundred and twenty trees now up from the original proposal of a hundred and ninety-one trees. So they've added approximately thirty-three, thirty more trees on the site as they're really fine tuning how they're going to lay everything out. If you remember, we had a little bit of a design change when we reduced the units from the, down to four hundred and forty. So it allowed us to do some more tree work and tree planting. I also, lastly, would like to point out that there are building material samples at the Building Department that were dropped off last week for board members to view if you would like. And we've also sent Gil kind of a key to those samples because there's a, there's a number of them. So there's a key there now that you can actually see on the building where a particular material would go. So with that said, I think I'd like to hand it over, if I may, Mr. Chair, for Brian and Ian to start their presentation.
Great, Brian. Great, thank you. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the boards, Brian O'Connor from Cube Three. I also have with me Steph Yall, who was working on the presentation with me, so you may hear her voice as well as Ian's. I think we're going to try to really not spend a lot of time on planning issues that we've talked about with, with you guys as a group, and we're going to really focus on trying to answer the questions that came up last time, as Ms. McGrail mentioned. So we are going to start with the off-site views, building rendering and materials, and then amenity courtyards and some materials and character, and then we want to leave time for questions and answers. So let, let's just jump right in. And I think what we're going to start with, if you can jump to the next one, Steph, so we, we have prepared a series of views for you guys, and we're going to start with one, two, three, and four. And these are sort of a little bit closer to the project, and what we're trying to do with all of these views is really bracket the potential public view corridors, like where can you see this project from? You're going to be able to see it from one twenty-eight with number five and number six, the orange arrows. You're going to see it approaching on either side from Quintupower Parkway going north and south. You're going to see it from the ring around the edge of the lake. And so what we've tried to do is be as responsive as we can to what we think this is going to look like from these public view corridors. And I think we're going to just wanted to orient you guys to where we're going to be looking. So again, we're going to start in close, looking north and south on Quintupower, then we'll go to one twenty-eight, and then we'll go around, around the edges of the lake. So let's dive right in. So what we're trying to do with all of these is make sure that you have an orientation to a before and after. We, we've sort of found that if we just present you with renderings, that you, you sort of lose a little bit of the context. So we want to make sure that there's a good contextual connection for you. Here we're on Quintupower Parkway looking north. On the right-hand edge, you can see the fairly intense landscape screening up against the edge of the lake. You can see the public path that runs down along the side and then the existing structure, and then the, the edge of Route one twenty-eight to the extreme left side.
Brian, if I could interrupt, if you could just to point out to the board that there's a key in the left-hand corner, upper corner.
Yeah, sorry. Thank, thank you, Brian. So every one of the views that we're going to have should have this key, and just to make sure everyone understands, the triangle opens towards the view. So we're standing on Quintupower Parkway looking north. Okay, Steph. So this is, this is a rendering. What we've done here is we've taken that view and we've sort of inserted the building in the model into it, and there's sort of a, a few really important highlights here. The road configuration remains the same. Quintupower will come in, turn to the left, and circle around the buildings connecting on the other side as it does today. The existing pedestrian path along the edge of the lake is on the extreme right-hand edge, and again, all of the landscaping and pathway in that area has been maintained. In between the two paths, you can see there's another path that kind of curves in along the edge of the buildings, and in between those two paths is a lot of existing mature landscape and trees. All of that is, is going to remain. And then as you view a little bit more towards the center, these three trees that you see right in front of you at the curve are proposed new trees of a significant caliber to really start to frame the view. And then as we go a little bit more left in the view, you can see there's an existing pine tree that we're working very hard to maintain that will live right in front of the edge of the restaurant. From a building standpoint, what you're seeing here is the sort of end cap of building one, which is the open, you know, very glassy, very transparent public restaurant function we anticipate at the end of that building. Ian, I don't know if I'm missing anything on the landscaping side, but feel free to jump in if I am anywhere along here.
I think you're good. I would just note that on the left-hand side of the drive, the previous image showed a lot of lawn, and what you see here obviously is, is a more landscaped condition there.
Yeah, we're, we're also adding notation in the roadway for bike, bike path, which you can see on the right-hand side. So we want to make sure that that's in there as well. So the next view, we're going to be looking in the other direction. So again, I'll, I'll refer you to the key in the upper left. So we're looking south on Quintupower Parkway, and this is sort of right at the curve where it bends around behind the existing building, public path on the left-hand side against the lake. You know, thi- this is the area where you're really confronted with a lot of pavement on the site right now, large parking fields, and then the existing building in the distance. Then the updated view here, you can see again over on the left-hand side of the image, we're maintaining the connectivity and the public path exactly as it exists today. And we're introducing, which I think you've seen in previous presentations, this new inner ring path that runs a little bit closer to the building. Again, all the landscaping that you see here is sort of a mix of existing and proposed, maintaining the mature trees everywhere that we can. Again, as Ian had mentioned, sort of a, a new blend of, of low-level landscaping here in the foreground. And as you look a little bit further to the right, you're seeing the end of building two here with that little sort of thin coming up off the top, and then where you see that brighter white area, that's the break between building one, sorry, building two and building three, and it's the end of that street that runs through the middle of our site. You can jump to the next view. So now, I think the key plan is really helpful. We're on the backside of the site looking northbound again. So this is where Quintupower wraps around and runs parallel to Route one twenty-eight. You can see one twenty-eight, obviously, on the left-hand side. Again, very sort of intense asphalt area here. And then if you jump to the afterview. So what you can see here is sort of the existing road maintained on the left-hand side as it is today. I think the, the foliage and everything off the page is, is, we're trying to be as consistent as we can with what we know that buffer to the highway is like in the summer. Landscape island in the foreground here, sort of separating Quintupower Parkway from the designated parking area in front of the building. The four-story building, this is the largest of the buildings. This is on the backside of the site, again, up against Route one twenty-eight. These are not the lower buildings. We just wanted to make sure we were showing you guys every angle and every view of this. And you can see in this view, we're sort of exposing that entire edge, so you can really get the scale of the building. We're trying to work hard in these images to make sure we're not being, you know, disingenuous in any way, and we're really showing you what these buildings are going to look like. And then the next view is from the opposite side. So now we're on the north side looking south again. Quintupower wrapping, Parkway wrapping around the existing parking lot here, a big open, open area of asphalt. And then in the revised view, next, again, one twenty-eight on the right-hand side. The building coming up and, and tucking fairly close into the corner here, big landscape buffer around the edge, trees along the edge of both sides of this building. Landscaping in the foreground here, and a fairly intense landscape buffer between the edge of Quintupower Parkway and the edge of the parking area for the building. And just beyond the trees on the right-hand edge of the building, you can see where the parking garage just sort of tucks out a little bit towards Route one twenty-eight. Okay, keep going. So now we're, we're on five and six, and these are the two orange arrows I showed you. So we're looking northbound on Route one twenty-eight. In the foreground on the right-hand side, we have the parking structure for one hundred Quintupower on the right-hand side, and then the, the, all of the building form that you see in there right now is the existing structure. And in the afterview, which Steph will show you now, this is sort of very carefully scaled to make sure the mass and the scale of this building and the proximity to the highway is appropriate. And with all of these, Mr. Chairman or anyone on the board, we're happy to come back afterwards and cycle through the before and afters if it's, if it's helpful. So this is looking northbound. Again, this is the, the edge of the building that provides the four-story face to the highway and, and in effect does create a fairly nice buffer between the highway and the lake itself. The next view, we're going to be looking in the other direction. So here we're looking southbound. We're on the northbound side of the highway, but we're looking southbound. And you'll notice, you know, these views aren't always exactly the best views. What we're trying to do here is make sure that we are using real views from Google Street View or wherever else, or photographs that we're able to take. We, we want to make sure that we're really inserting these buildings accurately. So in this case, you can see sort of the parking field at the edge of one twenty-eight in the existing building. If you jump to the next view, Steph, you can see the little green landscape buffer we have along the edge, some of the new trees that are going to be planted. It's a winter condition, so the trees are not really blocking the building the way they would. And then in the background, you can see the structure of one hundred Quintupower and the parking garage for that building as well. So we also, as we start to move around, the next three series of views that we're going to see are from a distance, and you know, with these, we really worked hard to try to get this right. It, it's really a challenge because we are so far away, but you know, these are important view corridors, and we, we know that you know, the, the town is concerned about these. So view seven, you can see in the key plan up on the upper right is from the edge of the lake where we have a break and a view corridor across. We did try to put a little red so you can see where the Jordan's Furniture is. Existing building is kind of the mass sitting right in front of that, and then right behind the tree on the left-hand side, we have one hundred Quintupower. And if you jump to the next view, Steph, what we've done here is we've taken out the existing building, and we've tried to insert our building. This is a summer view, and what you're going to see as we go through this is we tried to do both summer and winter for as many of these views as we could, because we, we understand there's a big difference in tree coverage, both from the highway and from this side. So you'll notice there are areas here where you can see the buildings kind of poking through between the trees. There's a very existing, a strong existing vegetated buffer there. We didn't want to take that out and erase it because it'll continue to exist. And I, I think what's kind of nice is even though there is a lot of building frontage here, what we're starting to see between the trees and the way this is sort of scaled relative to Jordan's is that feels, starting to feel a little bit more like a village in terms of the way it's presenting itself to the lake. And you, you'll see that in, in a number of different views. So in the next view, we, we're looking roughly from the same location, but we wanted to do a winter view as well, recognizing that there'll be less trees between the lake and the frontage and also on, on the edge of the lake on this side. So here you can much more clearly see one hundred Quintupower existing building and Jordan's Furniture with the red outline. And then in the afterview, the existing building goes away. Our new lower building is sort of tucked in there, and you can see it kind of along the edge again, sort of poking out between breaks in the winter, winter growth of trees along the edge of the lake. Okay. In the next view, we're at eight, and again, I'll refer you to the key plan in the upper left. Here we're a little further down the lake. This is an existing conditions photo. What we tried to do is really highlight the existing office building at one hundred Quintupower, the Jordan's Furniture skyline kind of on the edge, and then the existing building, which you can sort of see as the light gray, the larger mass, and then trickling down to the right. And then in the afterview, here, you can see the proposed building with a little more frontage along the lake, a little bit less height. But we wanted to show it in reference to the other two buildings as well from this viewpoint. View nine is a little further away, so now we're fully across the lake. Again, I, you know, apologize for the, some of the photographs here. These are really, really tough to do because they're so far away. So this is a nighttime shot from across the lake because we know there's some, some real sensitivity to the, the light pollution and the light corridors that exist there. So this is again, the existing office building, Jordan's Furniture. And then the existing you can see in, in the middle there. And then in the afterview, thi- this is actually a rendering, and we tried to kind of bring these together. When we put this into the photograph from this distance away, it, it honestly, like, we couldn't even really see it at night. So we wanted to be as real as possible, so we did a full rendering of this one. And then Steph, if you don't mind, we, we wanted to zoom in even further on the next page to make sure that, you know, you guys could clearly see what's going on. And I think here you can see the scale of the buildings a little bit. There's a little bit more of a glow that you see in the middle between the two buildings. And again, we, we, we feel like at least that between the trees along the edge of the lake and the smaller sort of scale of the lighting here, it really does feel like it presents a little bit more like a village. So let, let's keep going. There's one, one more view. This is a daytime view from roughly the same angle as well. So this is winter daytime now, and we have Jordan's in the existing, and then jump to the next one, Steph. And then you can see our existing building in there. Some of the contrast difference you may notice when you jump back and forth between the two is is not us being disingenuous about the brightness or the coloration. It's a fact that when we get to our buildings, you'll see that when you break down the mass and the scale of the buildings the way we are, and you use the palette of materials that we're proposing, they have a much softer, more naturalistic feel and aren't as jarring even from further away as the large expanses of the very sort of light limestone that exists on the current building. So let's keep going, Steph. So one of the things that we noticed spending a lot of time out there is that as you walk along the path from the two hundred Quintupower property on the path, there are a number of places where you can see Jordan's Furniture. It's, it's definitely something that dominates the skyline, and, and it's fairly clearly visible. And so one of the things we just wanted to share that we think is a real benefit of the project is that from our property or from this proposed property, these new buildings and the new structures really eliminate Jordan's, the Jordan's from the skyline. And if you jump to the next one, Steph, these are they're a little bit technical, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but I think it's really important. So the red line in the upper is the existing view line that you have from the path. So imagine on the right-hand side of that section is a little person, you know, five and a half feet tall looking over at the Jordan's Furniture, and the view line you have right now allows you to see the edge of that building. And in the bottom section, what we're saying is that, you know, with the new structures at three stories with the setback that they have, we're basically eliminating any possibility of seeing Jordan's or the skyline of Jordan's from the pathway on our property. And we, we just thought that's a nice sort of benefit to the way the massing is laid out. So we're going to walk you through a little bit closer here. These are a, a little bit more about the buildings. We have a quick series of views here. We're going to look at the edges of the buildings. We're going to look at the pass-throughs. We're going to look internally a little bit, and I just want to talk briefly about the level of development we've had on these buildings and where we think they're going. So we're going to start on the left-hand side with view one. Again, you'll notice there's a key in all of these views. So what we're looking at is sort of a, a very slightly elevated view right where the paths break apart. The existing path along the lake would go off to the right-hand side disappearing. What we're trying to show you here is the way we're imagining these buildings within the context. And I think right behind these trees is that sort of proposed restaurant. We tried to make the trees a little transparent, so you can see through. There's an outdoor, very active patio area with umbrellas and outdoor seating, and then a large patch of lawn and buffering separating that activity zone from the privacy and, and sort of the quiet of the pathways. And then you can start to see the building forms we're playing with here. And what we're really trying to do is play with the massing and the scale of these buildings so that they have a texture, they have a rhythm, but they're not repetitive. They're not overbearing. And so you'll notice that the buildings sort of both change in elevation with the roof forms and the roof planes so that you don't have continuous uninterrupted roof lines. And they also jog gently in and out so that you have relief and shadow line and edges so that the buildings feel more like a collection of smaller, more intimate units rather than one larger building. I don't know if I'm missing anything else, Ian, in this view relative to landscaping that's important to note, but if, if I am, please jump in.
I think you got it, Brian.
Okay. So in, in the next view, and again, I'd, I'd point you to the key plan on the left-hand side. We're, we're standing on the existing path looking back into the development here. What we're seeing on the left-hand side is the end of building one, and on the right-hand side, the end of building two as they come together, and then in the background, building three. And I just really wanted to point out here that we're sort of looking across a fairly, a fairly significant distance. I think from the pathway to the buildings here, we're we're well north of two hundred feet away, and that's across sort of the new rain gardens that we're creating, the existing landscape with the mature trees that, that's going to be maintained between the new pathways. And here what we're looking at is sort of the most active part of the project from a public facade standpoint, where we have active ground floor amenity on both sides of this connector, and then a plaza area connecting you to the building in the back. Next view. Now we're actually standing on the, the inner pathway here, and this is the proposed path. What we wanted to do is make sure that we were sharing enough of the buildings so you guys could see how they look. This is not a view you would have from the public path itself. Again, this is the inner path that we're creating, and you can see that on the key plan down along the bottom. We're looking along the edge of building two here. And again, you'll notice there's a little bit of a subtle difference between building one and building two. The material palette is a little bit different. The forms are a little bit different. The way we're breaking down the roof lines, again, we have a lot of balconies, large glass areas. And again, in this view, you can start to see a little bit of that breezeway on the right-hand side. You can see these beautiful sort of bridge connectors across the rain gardens that allow the residents to connect out to this path, and then ultimately further to the left across to the existing path that, that lives there with the town now against the lake. And you can see building one sort of in the distance behind some of the existing trees. You jump to the next image, Steph. So now we're looking at sort of a, a little bit more of a detailed view. There was some discussion about the, the breezeways and what they mean and how they feel and what they look like. So this is a shot sort of right in the middle of building one. If you look to the left on the very edge of the left-hand image- Sort of right in the middle of building one. If you look to the left on the very edge of the left-hand image, you can see the restaurant and some of the outdoor seating. Uh, this is again, on the inner pathway, right? You know, very close to the building, not the public path. What we're trying to do with these connectors is really create a breezeway that allows a very. Sort of intimate but bright, light and airy connection between the main street that we're creating in front of building three. Out to this beautiful landscaped area. So there's very intense landscaping. New trees. I think we really pared the tree scale back down. So you can see that here. This bridge connector does a few things and you, you'll see it in, in the next rendering as well, but it's not only a connector between these buildings that allows us to have. Sort of reasonably digestible community sizes, but it's also a place where we've located co-working space. Um, so we think that these connectors, um, in particular with the large glass areas are really going to be a beautiful place to. To really interact with the landscape. And so, uh, in addition to the co-working space, there's also a security office that you'll see in one of the other views that lives right at this connector. I think one of the things we really wanted to show. Um, no, go ahead and jump forward Steph, is that, you know, these connectors mean one thing during the day and these breezeways feel very different at night. So we really wanted to get the scale of this in here so you could see it. Again, the building volumes and masses. Are really broken down. This is pushed quite a bit into the building from the edge. So really in a lot of the views we looked at earlier, you can't even see these breezeways. But they do serve a really important function. They allow entry into the building at the ground floor on either side. They can be really beautifully lit. We think they're intimate spaces that really contribute positively to the character of this place. Uh, we also can see on the right-hand side, under the bridge here is the visible. Uh, very glassy connector into the security office that we're proposing. So again, co-working space in the upper levels and then security office at the lower levels. This is another view. This is much more from within the project. Uh, I know there was some conversation last time and Ian will get into it a little bit more about. You know, what's in these courtyards? What do they feel like? What's the quality and the character of the space? And I, I, I think we envision these as, as really fairly passive green spaces. Um, that are there for the residents. This is a large lawn area. In one of the courtyards and you can see sort of the edge of the building three is to the back of us. Building two is in the foreground. You can see the breezeway connector leading down to the lake. And you know, we see these as, as fairly, you know, this one in particular, fairly lightly used. Um, outdoor spaces that, you know, the residents can just enjoy as lawn areas. Uh, you can also see. Running to the right and left side, the, the new road that we're creating between these buildings and some of the parallel parked or head and park cars along that street. You jumped in that. So this is the, the last of these renderings and this one, again, from the key plan, we're sort of in the main street area here. So this is not. Part of the project that is exposed to the public path, uh, really along the lake. This is the main street corridor that we're creating between the back of building one and two and the front of building three. Again, larger amenity space on the left-hand side, very active ground floor use. You can see at the top of the building, um, a little bit of a, a canopy that we're creating up there with some, some light sailcloth. The difference in this building, again, there's, there's subtle but important changes to the architecture and the style. These buildings are a little bit cleaner. They're a little bit less broken down than the ones along the lake. There's a less of a focus on really breaking up. Every little piece of the roof line. The wood material is a little bit of a darker tone. And so we're really playing with a very sophisticated. Um, and subtle but important differentiated palette between these buildings. And if you jump to the next image Steph, I think we can talk a little bit about that. Um, when we think about these buildings, we really spent a lot of time out here and we, we really. Thought about the different seasons. We thought about the patterns and the color palettes and the thing that, the things that really inform this as a place. And we tried to write on the next page, a couple of quick goals. Um, we really wanted to build on, on the different seasonal aspects of the project. So thinking about the blues and the greens, the cooler shades, but also building on the warmer tones. Um, that exist out there, natural colors and materials. We want these buildings to not feel jarring. We want them to feel like they are. Structures. We want them to feel like they're buildings, but we also really want to try to find a way to blend in with this place. So thinking about more organic feeling materials and patterns and then diversity of building form and detail. And then in the next couple, we're just going to walk through very quickly the color palette. Uh, again, Brian, Mr. McGrell had mentioned that these are, are on view and visible. I'm, I'm hoping. At least a few of you had a chance to look at the samples. Uh, the wood tone panel in, in the front building here. Is the dominant material for building one, uh, a lighter gray panel on some of these sections. The tan siding. Really lives only at these breezeway connectors and then we're using a darker siding to really reinforce. Um, the breakdown of these balconies. So that's kind of at all these inset areas where the balconies recess into the building. Building two, you can see the color palette is very similar, but it does tweak in terms of. The material percentages and how they're used. There's a little bit more of the light gray panel here. Again, the tan siding at the breezeway connector is the same. The wood tone panel on this building is also the same, but there's a lot less of it and it's used in a more vertical orientation to kind of create the town home feels. And again, the dark gray siding at the inset balcony areas. And then building three in the back, we've gone to a, a, a darker, uh, tone on the wood panel, which really should set it back. It should read a little bit more quietly behind the other buildings. We've introduced a little bit of a brighter white panel. We have the light gray panel again in the dark gray siding is really consistent within those recessed balcony areas. So we've worked really hard to kind of establish a, a tone to these buildings that feels consistent, that works together. But as differentiation subtleness and sophistication that allow this to feel like a place and at the same time, we hope really connect to the, to the site and to the place. So I'm going to let, uh, it, turn it over to Ian now to talk through some of the landscape concepts.
Great. Thanks Brian. Hello again, everybody. Uh, so when we spoke last in December, uh, we kind of had talked more about the landscape design. On the public side of things, sort of surrounding the building, um, the area with the rain gardens, the lakefront and sort of the perimeter areas. And one of the things that we heard from you in our last talk was that you wanted more detail about what was happening in these courtyard spaces between the buildings. Uh, so here we have our site plan and what we're going to do is dive into the details for the three courtyards on building three. So the flex courtyard, the pool courtyard and the recreation courtyard. And then we're also going to take a look at the public plaza between buildings one and two. And we have some updates on the community path. Uh, so if we can go to the next slide. So starting with building three on the southern side, the flex courtyard. And as the name implies, this is intended to be sort of a flexible use space. The idea here is that we would have differing, uh, different types of activities. Uh, spaces for outdoor work from home pods with, uh, you know, potentially some furniture that's wired so people can plug in their laptops. And if the day is nice and they're working from home, they could sit outside and plug in and do their work. There's also subspaces where, uh, we think we can have sort of wellness related activities. So. Um, yoga or meditation can happen. Uh, we're showing a small shade structure to kind of, uh, make that a more comfortable outdoor space. Uh, again, if people wanted to work under that, there would be some shade, uh, sort of helping with that activity. And because we need to balance, uh, the site. And the stormwater management, we know we have these rain gardens that we need to kind of, uh, maximize the site area. Uh, we think this is a space that's actually going to be achieved with sort of a low elevated boardwalk structure. So basically this, this hardscape will be. Perched above that area where the rain gardens need to do their thing. Um. Uh, we're also looking at it sort of as a, a, a. Sculptural composition where you can see the image in the upper right, that sort of artistic placement of. Birch trees with the low level landscape. That's sort of an aesthetic in the courtyard that we're shooting for. Uh, if we could go to the next courtyard. So here we have the pool courtyard, which is the largest. Uh, this is obviously tied directly to that primary, uh, amenity space on building three. Really, it's a series of three spaces. So up against the building on the right-hand side of the plan. Would be the amenity, uh, terrace, which is a sunken space that's really intended to extend that indoor use outside. Have a lot of dialogue between those interior uses and the outside. And within that zone, we would have things like the grills and the dining tables. There would be lounge seating. There may be some outdoor TVs mounted to a wall. Uh, we're seeing a long sort of banquet bench element. Uh, where there could be some fire tables or other movable, uh, tables and seating so that people can kind of sit in flexible groups. Really, that's kind of a hangout zone at the heart of the development. Next to that is the pool terrace, which would be raised up. Um, again, that amenity terrace would be sunk down, but the pool terrace would be up another, you know, eighteen inches or so. That pool terrace will be surrounded by a fence. Uh, it'll have, uh, plenty of space for lounge seating around it. And on the backside, we're thinking we'd have a large, a long, uh, shade element, an arbor of some sort, which we typically do with. With pools so that you can be out in the sun and then if you get hot, you can kind of move into the shade. Uh, almost like a cabana, uh, situation. And then that whole terrace is surrounded by quite a bit of planting. So the idea here is that that. That pool courtyard is, is sort of nestled with, with planting. To the left of it, we have a flexible, uh, sort of game lawn space. So this would be a flat lawn panel. That would have some raised bleacher-like seating. So people could kind of sit on that. And then the lawn itself could support different types of, you know, sort of lawn games like cornhole or beanbag or what have you. Um. So that's the pool courtyard. We go to the next one. So the third one on building three is what we call the recreation courtyard. Um, the idea here is that we have this central lawn panel. We're thinking that we could play with the topography a little bit to have some sort of playful forms to it. So that image in the upper right. Could be kind of a sculptural and fun way to use the lawn. It's not really a. Sport lawn is more of an activity lawn. For gathering. Uh, we think this is a space for community programming. So the idea of maybe. Having social events or other sorts of community gatherings for the residents. This could be the spot where they set up, uh, a small projector or one of those inflatable movie situations. So you can imagine in the summer, there could be, uh, movie night on the lawn for the residents. We're also showing a small patio where there would be, uh, some grills and outdoor seating. And maybe a small fire pit. So again, some of that, um, outdoor gathering, uh, support space would be there. And then sort of, uh, buffering the courtyard from the street. We have a grove of trees that would have stoned us around it and there would be movable seating. Um, within that grove of trees. Next slide please. So now we get to the public plaza, which is that space between buildings one and two. Really, the idea here is that this is a space that engages with the lake. It's the reason why we're here. We want the views to the lake to be important and part of the experience. Uh, when you're in this public plaza. You'll see that we're showing this sort of as a really organic layout and the intention there is that we make it feel like it's a series of subspaces that are defined by planting and natural elements. Uh, there's a bunch of small spaces. They all are adjacent to the first floor uses of the two buildings on either side. But also that space kind of spills across that, uh, neighborhood street and ties to the amenity that's in building. Three. So we want this public realm to really be sort of a continuous open space. At the outer edge where a bunch of the community path, we see there being some small fire pits and movable Adirondack. Style seating, kind of taking advantage of the views. Uh, closer to the building, we have the grove of trees and we thought it could be fun to have. You know, things like hammocks or other fun type of seating. So then on a nice summer day, you can imagine relaxing on the hammock. Lakeside and really getting sort of that, that, um, outdoor, modern rustic, um, experience. If you go to the next slide. And then the community path. So I, I think when we last talked to you, we had shown that as a shared use between bikes and pets. We had it shown striped. Um, since we've talked with the friends and coordinated a little bit more. The idea here now is that this is a community path. It's solely for pedestrians. It doesn't have a bike component to it. It's still twelve feet wide. It's still can comfortably accommodate strollers, dog walkers. Uh, people who want to jog, um. But it doesn't have the white component to it. And then as we've taught. Uh, touched about quite a bit, this thing is a sort of a sinuous layout that's really, um, intended to integrate with the landscape and the rain gardens. In the areas where we need to kind of pass through those rain gardens, we see that as an elevated boardwalk structure. You can see that with a sort of tan. Section of the path on the left. We think there's opportunities there also for interpretive moments where we can have. Um, information about the ecology or the local history and things like that and little bump outs that kind of pop off the side of that, uh, path. And next slide. And then we get into some of the materials of what the hardscape would be for these various, uh, courtyards. So starting on the upper left, the idea of a porous asphalt pavement for the community path, again, trying to be. Responsible relative to the stormwater management. Um, the image next to that shows the stabilized stone dust with trees coming out of it. That's a soft. But still accessible and permeable condition that I think is a nice kind of garden, um, detail. Next to that, we have the idea of the, uh, wood boardwalk. Uh, again, trying to allow those rain gardens to do what they need to, to do, but have that walkway be elevated above it. And then next to that, in the upper right, the permeable pavers. Uh, we're thinking we could do something there that may be a step beyond just a traditional brick shape. You can get pavers now that have different shapes to them and have some interest. Maybe they feel a little bit more natural or organic. And this is just one example of that. Uh, at the bottom, lower left, the idea of the grasscrete, uh, concrete paver. So. These would be a hardscape that could be used next to sort of seldom, seldom used service areas like around the, um, the transformers where they may have to occasionally get a truck up to it. You need to support the vehicle, but you want to be able to have that be primarily a vegetated surface. And then next to that, the permeable strip, that would be the detail that happens along the neighborhood street where again, we're trying to. Direct the surface water into infiltration before it gets into the street. Uh, that will be coupled with a furnishing zone and tree grates and things like that. So it feels like it's part of that really, you know, well detailed neighborhood street. Next to that, um, a sustainable lawn alternative. So in some areas, rather than having just. You know, traditional mode irrigated fertilized lawn. There's other species out there that approximate that look and feel that require a lot less energy. That's what that image shows. And then lastly, in the lower right, uh, the idea of using recycled materials. So. The image there shows these Adirondack style seats that we think are appropriate for places, uh, like that public plaza that I talked about. But using that HDPE material, which is a, a recycled material. And I believe that's our last slide. So, uh, looking forward to discussing this with you guys. Thank you.
We're obviously happy to answer any questions or. Entertain any comments of the board, Mr. Chair. Or go back twenty slides and any board members want to see again.
My first question is, um, why no bike path?
So we're actually, we're working with the town engineer right now to have a bike path on, uh, on Quantipal Parkway. Um. As we understand, there was a, you know. Bill and I was working with some planners. Who are interested in seeing, it's like a bike lane that goes on Quantipal Parkway and kind of, you know, it will be incorporated into a greater plan. Of bike connectivity around the entire lake. Which I think will be really nicely executed.
So like a bike lane to get in the way of traffic instead of going along the lake?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, there's going to, there's going to be a bike lane on Quantipal Parkway going out to North App that we're proposing.
Yeah.
And then that, so that will carry around the building. So, you know, a lot of people that, you know, ride bikes, you know, around the lake might be doing it for a workout that could kind of conflict with. You know, baby carriages and children and dogs and. So if, you know, I think the goal, um, is to direct them. In a proper area for biking instead of putting them in the, in the pedestrian, um, traffic lanes.
Okay. I'm not a big bike lane fan, but okay. Um, and then. Can you go back? I wish I remembered what page it was. It was, you were looking at building three. Um, from building two, I believe.
I, I think it was in the rendering section, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I think it might, might be. Was it this one?
No, it's the one before that. Well, actually I do have a question about that one too. What is that little space that's over there that looks like it's retail?
Uh, that, that's just the leasing, uh, amenity area for the building. So it's not, it's not retail.
Okay.
Sorry, it does, it doesn't.
I got a little excited, yeah.
Yeah, it looks a little like clothes hanging. It's not.
Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, it was a different one, um.
Was it, was it this one that you occurred?
No, I was looking from. It just, it threw me because it didn't look like it, it matched up with what the drawings look like. It's. So it's if you, you know, the little U pot on building three, all the way to the right.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was, I think we were looking at that from the inside.
All right. So it's go down right, right there Steph. That's this one. Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I've just, I think I'm, oh, we're looking the opposite way. Okay. Now it makes sense.
Towards the lake.
I was reading it backwards. Okay, never mind.
Okay.
That's all I have for right now. Thanks.
Thanks Sammy. Any other board members?
Yeah, I do. Um, so. In looking at the one twenty-eight images. They, it, it, you've done a nice job basically in the inner court and around the lake. they it it the you've done a nice job basically in the inner court and around the lake and done some real nice character. But the 128 side is is just so industrial, it seems like anyway. So we don't have really good shots uh of what that looks like really, but it does look so industrial and doesn't carry the same character as the rest of the project. And what I can perceive this to look like at this point.
Yeah, I can you, um, Steph, can you go to the the view internally that we we thought um we were looking at before, that the plaza view inside rendering? Yeah. So you can actually, that that last view was good first. So I I I think what we're trying to do is carry the materiality of the buildings a- around the corner. Um, I think what you're probably seeing here a little bit as well is there, there aren't as many balconies. Go, go to the view of build the front of building three stuff where we have the rendering. Um, I I think the big difference between the front and the back of building three is that the the side of building three facing into this main street has more depth and articulation to it for sure. We have, you know, the deeper inset balconies. We have a little bit more playfulness in the facade in and out. Um, and and on the highway side, it's definitely flatter. Um, we we don't have the inset balconies. We don't have as much playfulness in and out in the form. We are carrying sort of a consistent palette of materials over there, but I I I think we're certainly happy to continue to explore, you know, how that looks and feels for sure. But I think the intent is to be consistent somewhat.
It doesn't, it doesn't look like housing like everything else does. Basically, it looks, it could be an office building. It could be a factory. And and I'm not sure how uh you don't get a good intent as to what the, how the garage melds into that. What's the character of the garage in relationship to the living sections, basically. And it just looks boxy. It doesn't have the it doesn't have the wow factor. And so if if you're trying to show from the street anyway, from 128 that this is housing, it doesn't say housing. It's, it could say anything basically at this point. So to me, this on the inside of this thing and on the lakeside, it's, it's really pretty much well thought through. There might be a few things that are issues, but that other side has been I think set aside and too much time has been spent everything else. So this is really, we haven't done a design on 360 basic at this point because part of that is part of this project has been left behind. I understand what you're saying, but I I don't buy it basically at this point. There needs to be more happening on that to really make it stand out, even though you're just driving by. Um, it that gives you a physical message basically and gives it some character at this point. So I would suggest this, that area needs some real focus at this point, which has been probably the orphan child for everything else.
Yeah, we we have, we have thought about it. I I think that's a, that's a great comment. I I think what we really tried to do there is is use a lot of the same patterns and textures from the inside, but but it is flatter. So I I think it's certainly something we can explore some more. I think getting getting a little bit more break in the volume, a little more break in the roof line so that it has a a pattern and a character of vertically oriented residential will will probably help and.
Well, in on on the inside, you do break it up a lot. All right. What you've done is taken some of the material and just wrapped it like newspaper around the rest of it. So it has no character really. And in in breakup of materials like, like the photograph we're looking at right now, where in fact it's, you know, not just the up and down, up in and out basically, but but it's also material break basically. So the other side is it's just on, doesn't one, I I can't understand it as much as I'd like to. Secondly, it looks blah basically. So I really recommend that some real study be done on that side. So it 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 just has the same feel as the inside. I know it's the back of the building and but, you know, on the other hand, there shouldn't be any back of the building on this. I know it's towards the highway, which presents its own problem basically, but you know, I'd I'd like to see further studies on that side uh of that project.
Okay, point, point made and taken. Let's move on.
No, we don't. We lost two jobs.
Uh, Jimmy, you done? I got a quick.
Yeah, yeah, I'm done. Go for it.
Uh, okay. Yeah, real quick, Brian. Um, I think it's view three and four. You guys have it up a minute ago with Jim, too. Um. I saw like from from view three, it looks like you have a lot of landscaping between the back of the building and the highway, but then you do the highway view and it seems like there's no landscaping.
Yeah, it it's a little tricky. If you go to the before view of that stuff, I I think I think one of the things that happens in all of these that is really hard to control is the the fisheye view that you get from uh street view in Google tends to flatten terrain out quite a bit. And so the hill that we all know exists between the property and the elevated edge of the highway on the left-hand side, especially here is gone.
Yeah, it looks dead. It looks dead here. And then you show that view. It's all lush and green.
Yeah, I I think in the summertime condition, if you're back there, um whoop, Steph, go, move too fast. Go to the other side for a sec, Steph, if you don't mind. There, uh, yeah, right here. I I think some of the trees that we're seeing here are are actually like I went, I was down there the other day and I have pictures from way back in the in the summer and in the spring. There there is a lot of buffer there on the side. And and for some reason, in the Google street view, it just doesn't read as much as it does. I think part of it's the fisheye lens. Um, but you know, I I think at the end of the day, it's it's, we're not proposing to change anything outside that roadway. So I I apologize if it looks like we're we're
No, that's, that's there, but I guess that brings me to my second question is like winter conditions. So all this lushness that you show us now, come winter time, we're gonna lose a lot of this greenery, right? Obviously.
Yeah.
Ian, do you want to speak to that a little bit in terms of the plantings that you picked for this plan and how those are gonna respond in different seasons?
Sure. So we do have some evergreens that are proposed. Those will obviously represent foliage all year round, but um also like the lower level stuff that we have, uh, we're really trying to d- design it such that we have year-long interest. So like tall grasses and things like that that'll always, always be there. You know, you obviously cut them back in the spring. Uh, things that are really uh interesting in terms of their um structure. So like birch trees in the bark, the things that are still apparent and beautiful to look at. So it's not just looking through uh dead materials. It's some stuff that has something going on in the winter seasons.
Yeah, no, okay. No, that was it. Um, I do I did like all the amenities on the outside, especially that 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 field there with the bumpy hills and the grass, but just have fun mowing that thing. But no, I do like, I do like a little bit of the building. I look, I like the outside amenities and I appreciate you guys' time. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Jim.
Are we, one, I, do you want to still just talk about the slides or are we ready to move on to talk about the project as a whole and the size?
I would, I would say let's get through these slides and what was presented to us and we can proceed from there.
Then I have no comments yet. I have plenty for the future.
Okay. Anyone else?
I guess, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's Tom. Do bring up slide number two, please. It's the view looking south from Quantapaw Parkway. Of the the new, not the old. The proposed, not the existing. Perfect. Yep. I guess I'm just bringing this up to, we can talk about it with size and so forth. You know, it was my comment last week about the break of the buildings and my concern that you know, as a pedestrian, how you're gonna experience this and it's, it's about a quarter mile length of uh distance from one side to the other uh of this project. And this kind of confirms what I'm thinking. And I appreciate all the work you've done to to break down the massing. I don't think it's the height. You know, I have no problem with the height, but it's just like one wall of building. Despite all the uh undulations debate and all the, you know, architectural elements that you put into the building, I guess. Um, so I I am still a little bit concerned and I understand what you said about the the bridges between the buildings, but it seems like a long length of building. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Anyone else for now? Okay, because they provided us views across the lake. Like, we asked for that. Again, it's a little hard from some of those distances. He I thought there'd be a little more of a differentiation from what we see today, but as best as I could, you know, insert them um into those renderings. Um, you know. I don't know if I want to say pleasantly surprised, but I just, I didn't, I thought there'd be more of a difference.
When we first brought it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Um, when we first brought it up, I I thought there would be two. And I know that's difficult to for them to really uh render. But you get the point. It's not much bigger than what was there. Certainly better looking.
Right, right. From those other views, yeah. I think, I think a lot, if I could just add, I think a lot of that goes to to discussions that my client had with the friends of Lake Quantapaw, like going back to the beginning, when they made a commitment to keep the the height of the buildings down there below the requirements and zoning uh on that, in that district. And I think it really show, it really shows how big the John's Furniture Building is and the, and the 100 Quantapaw Office Building that, you know, basically tower over this. Um, and I think it is, um, Brian O'Connor said, it does look like more like a village on that side. All right. And my only other comment again, it just, and I I think it was Chip who raised the last time, just getting to the next level of detail. So this is, this is some good detail. These are some good updates. Even the materials showing the signing. Um, but then just for example, you know, this auxiliary lawn component, you said, you know. I think we just got to get to another level of where exactly would that be? So updating a landscape plan that shows where everything's gonna be conceptually, but really where you envision each of those elements being. Um, not just the plantings and the trees and anything that's evolved. You said you've added more. But where's some of these other elements would show up? And I think we're going there next with the amenities inside. I think we still wanted to see something inside, right? Is that next, Brian? Not tonight. I thought we, I thought we touched on a lot of those amenities at the last meeting. Um, I thought we were looking for more details. Um, maybe if it's. We can, we'd be happy to provide it.
No, I would, I would agree with Dave. When we talked about the the restaurant and eliminating the cafe, if you would. You'd like, you were like, well, we gotta talk about, okay, where's package drop off? Where, you know, is there a conce- concierge service? You know, what? What are you providing? Uh, you know, is there a a a pick a sandwich place, that type of thing? Um, because we didn't understand that piece because we went at least from my feeling, we went from kind of a convenience store atmosphere with laundry pickup and convenience store, maybe pick up a a meal type of thing to a bigger restaurant. And then there was a comment, well, we'll explain the other amenities at some point. Well, those other amenities are what we're looking for. How? What's the experience that these people are gonna have? Where are they gonna find it? Is it out of vending machines? What? You know, but that's for the future.
Sure. So so similar to the, similar to the presentation that we made on the outdoor activity areas, you're interested in what is on the inside for some of those things.
Well, I, all right, I, you know, I'm waiting for the shuttle. Can I get a cup of coffee somewhere?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that we went from a small little cafe where there was gonna be breakfast sandwiches. And then we said enlarge that to the restaurant and we eliminated the other piece. So I'm like, where is that getting replaced? Because I think that's an important piece, right? As as you look at, you know, you guys want to talk about this as a village. Well, in this village, how do I get my dry cleaning taken care of? How do I get coffee in the morning, waiting for the shuttle, shuttle to go to the train? Um, I get home at night. Nobody's thought about dinner. Where do I pick up a quick prepared meal? Am I then jumping on the shuttle and going downtown? Or is there some spot here that's gonna right, gonna provide that for me? What, how am I gonna live in this village, if you may?
And I think those points are very well taken. We'll be ready at the next meeting to provide that detail.
Okay, that's, I I wasn't sure when Brian showed the original agenda, whether it was tonight or there was another, when you said amenities, I think maybe that's right. My mind went. But yeah, and then how much of it's for the residents themselves? How much of it is open to the public who can access part of the site?
Yeah, I'm walking around the lake. Can I get a cup of coffee somewhere?
Right, right.
So that was that whole cafe. That was that whole cafe piece originally.
All right. So that queued up. That was in my mind. But anyone else before we, on these slides and this information? All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. Any additional work that went into it? Okay, Brian, was that the extent of the new material and testimony that you were planning to present?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, board members.
You ready?
I'm gonna open the floor to you then. Because that's what the board member wanted. But let's take it one at a time. Share your thoughts.
I'm, I'm happy to start.
Please, go for it.
Um, so a little bit of a soapbox. As I, as I think about this project and we've certainly been thinking about it for a long time. I I don't like to ever go with the what could we have, what might it have? I'd like to present, you know, and talk about what we are looking at and who we're looking at. Um, we've seen over the last, or at least I've seen over the last 17 years, a lot of development in Wakefield. I've seen a lot of two-unit buildings and I've seen a lot of 10-unit buildings and I've seen a lot of 20-unit buildings, one, 200-unit building and never a 440, a 400-unit building before. So this is certainly the biggest project we've, we've looked at. I do believe however that so when you look at that and you start thinking about, okay, who can handle that type of project? So I'm thrilled personally that CCNF is the developer on this. Because it would scare me if it was somebody that wasn't a well-known proven New England company. Right? That that didn't get how to do things in towns and communities similar to ours that Cabot Cabin and Forbes has done. I'm thrilled with the things that Cabot Cabin and Forbes has brought to the table that will affect Wakefield outside of this property. You know, going back, way back when we heard about the $1.3 million given to town for the infrastructure. Um, we talk about in the development, taking this very asphalt driven property and creating much more diverse, different uh landscapes. Uh, I think Amy once said, geez, there were too many flowers on it. Well, I don't know that that's such a horrible thing. Uh, it is very busy, very complicated. But I think it's great because of what we have now is so stark. Um, and and you know, yeah, it's big, but I think they handled the big well. Um, I don't disagree with Tom that there's a lot of frontage. I do think it's a little curved. Um, you know, it it's different than what we're we're used to, but I think when you look at it in context to Jordan's Furniture and 100 Quantapawit, it kind of has those similar feels, but is a couple more of them put together. So I think as, as you look across the lake and yes, I agree with you guys that the renderings I thought would be more dramatic. I think by keeping uh many of the larger trees along the lakeshore um help break up those views from across the lake. So getting back to the size, I I would be okay if it was bigger, right? And and for many reasons, but I'm happy it's where it is. Um, I feel having one developer controlling 400 units with 79 affordable units is better than you know, uh, 10 developers with 40 units um scattered across the town. We can, how, this is a perfect spot for housing. We we are a community within 128 to Boston. This is a perfect spot along 128, real quick, easy access. Um, you know, I I think it's a perfect spot for housing. Um, I almost wish it would be condo because I contemplate getting a lake view, but uh you know, it, and I've heard that comment from many people. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm not struggling with. So I'm, I'm, I'm not struggling with the fact that it's not R and D or, or whatnot. I'm okay with the fact that it's housing and, and, and again, with CCNF that it will be continued and up, you know, kept up. If, if it was condos, I'd be concerned that the condo association want to keep all the, all the flowers and want to keep all the rain gardens maintained. But if you're looking at an apartment complex, they have to keep it maintained or else they won't rent. You know, so, so I feel good about that. The, the commitment that they've made to the Friends of Lake Quanapawat about maintaining the town property on this end of the lake in that, but it's theirs. You know, what a great advantage that is to get that out of the town's Bailey Wick and to keep it at the same level that their property is. You know, we, we heard, you know, traffic. We heard that, you know, they're redoing Quanapawat Parkway, they're redoing a bike path. And I've also heard, and I haven't heard the number, but there's going to be a significant set aside for looking at access out onto Lowell Street, so that in the future year, two years, three years, five years down the road, if there's an issue, that there's money there to take care of it. Just in case the the traffic is different than they expected to be down the road. So for all those reasons, the, the CCNF being the developer, I think they've done a good job breaking up, but you know, there's, there's certainly some work to do, as Jim had said, on the far side. Or maybe even as Tom has mentioned, by shifting the buildings a little bit so that it doesn't quite look like that row house effect. Minor, what I would call minor tweaks as we move forward. But I think all in all, it's a, it's a great project. And I think it, all in all, it's, CCNF has done a great job answering so many questions and, you know, the shuttle. You know, I don't know if it's going to work, it's certainly worth a try. And if it does work and they do get other projects involved in it, what a great thing to have in town. And if people do jump on that and go down to the train, you know, that's wonderful. And, and you know, COVID, I think, has proved to us a lot that there may be a need for these outdoor workspaces or the workspaces that are suggested, the common workspaces that are in some of the, the pathways. I know I sound a little bit like a CCNF spokesman and I don't mean to, but I really do think this is a good project, not bad for Wakefield, but good for Wakefield. So that's my soapbox, Mr. Chairman, for now.
Anyone else?
Nobody else is going to pick up, I'll take my space next. I agree with where Chip's coming from. I think they've done, you know, an excellent job. Except, except at 128, of course. And I expect to see them clean that up, but the, the biggest thing for me is, quite frankly, I don't believe the traffic reports on either end will pan out. So as, as Chip mentioned, some sort of, if we were to go ahead with this, then some sort of condition would have to be set up in some, some way, basically, to correct that in the future after this place is occupied and we physically actually have traffic running or at least activity on the roads. I also have been advocate for some time to clean up the edge of the lake, which is overgrown, not taken care of. And anybody that spent some time walking, which I do quite often, would see that there actually was a scheme at one time along there. But it's long since overgrown and in fact killed some of the trees. So I look forward to basically that sort of cleanup as well. So I'm primarily in those, in those areas at this point. I also, like Chip says, I, you know, this thing's up against 128. As long as the traffic problems can be solved, basically coming out of the site, then what better thing to be right on the top of the highway to sort of zoom out? Now, we all know at certain times that highway gets clogged too. This ain't going to make it any better or worse, basically. In fact, it, it may be somewhat diversified, depend, given how business is going to be conducted. Even now, basically, but in the future, because we, we've made a radical change in business operations through, through basically computer systems. So I'm, I'm lending myself towards this project at this point. But I do, I do basically want to put some conditions, basically, eventually on this thing if we were to vote for it. End of conversation.
Thanks, Jim. And I think that has come up, there definitely be. And we'd have to talk to the town engineer and get a, a ballpark number and a way to put that in a set of conditions for future traffic assessments and improvements as needed on both ends, yeah. Okay, anyone else?
No, I guess. Go ahead, Joe.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, I agree with Chip and and Jim. I like the fact that it's close to the highway, the two entrances. You know, the fact that I'm going to clean up the lake. I run that lake mostly every day with my sister in the summertime when it's not this cold out, but you know, I'm sick of looking at that very building, all that concrete. I've caught, you know, driven through there a bunch of times with my son was in daycare around that area. And, you know, so I'll be quick, but yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm liking the looks of this building and the amenities, like I mentioned earlier, and I'm not really too worried about the traffic, I drive by that building every day, I live on Lowell Street, so it's, it's right there, so. And it'll be, it's different, like Brian said earlier, that compared to a commercial building, people are coming and going all times of the day compared to, you know, eight in the morning and for like, when people are coming to work and leaving work all at the same time, so. I don't really see traffic as too much an issue with the two entrances, so at that, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Tom, I think you were next.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I agree with Chip and Jim. You know, part of the problem we have is, you know, we're always limited to time, so we end up nitpicking, right? So we're just lasering in on sometimes small details. You know, but big picture, their approach, the architecture, the site plan, the commitment to the lake and the town has all been great, you know, I appreciated the, the presentation on the science and how they're going to improve. You know, the, the lake in that regard too. So now, I am just focused in on that, that one issue now that I think could be a tweak, that I think it could be improved. And not to beat the dead horse, but I'm with Jim. I'm, I'm a little skeptical of the traffic report and that, that's not CCNF's fault, they went through the process that we have here in town. But I'm going to be looking for that condition as well. So with that, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll go. All right, Amy, Amy, go ahead, go for it, Amy.
Okay, thanks. So now that Chip's called me a flower hater and I call myself a bike lane hater. I appreciate all the work that, that this group has put into this. I too am still worried about traffic. Still worried about the number of people it's bringing into the community, not that I don't want to bring people into the community, but I just, in my personal opinion, it's just we're over, we're overloading our town for everything. And I've said it before and just want to make sure that I, that I still, people know that I still have those concerns, so that's it.
Thanks, Amy. Greg?
Yeah. I basically echo everything Chip said, and I guess with almost the opposite of, of Amy, I, yes, I originally was worried about overloading the town as she pretty, you know, I think that the major concerns we always have are you know, traffic, schools, public safety. Well, our own traffic consultants that we pay ourselves, you know, we always hear that, oh, consultants can tell you whatever their clients want. Well, our own traffic consultants peer reviewed and that report, and I'm comfortable with that. And then we also had our own experts, the, the fire chief, police chief and school superintendent review the financial impact study and they, you know, all seem to be, I rewatched some of the video today to be okay with it. So I've been convinced, I, I had major concerns as this started, but having our own experts look at the numbers, you know, design. I like where it's going, but overall, I think size wise, you know, I've, I've, I've gotten there, I'm comfortable with it.
Thanks, Greg.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Mickey Philly, I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for listening to us as to the restaurant space. I do feel like it's, here's a glass box and it's a bit of, you guys wanted this, so here you go. A little bit of an afterthought, and it's really kind of an important part of sharing this area with the whole town. Just give a little thought to it. When I envision this in my head, if you, I'm sure you've been to the Rivers Edge Project in Medford. This is clearly a different project than that. But the porch is a restaurant that they have over there. It enlivenes the space, it becomes a community feature. And they've really given some thought to that. So just keep it in mind. I know there's build outs by individual restaurants and who knows what's going to go in there. But just keep it in mind that it, right now, it's not, it's not really doing it. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Mr. Chair, it's Greg, one more, sorry, just real quick, one thing I wanted to, my actual, my only note was the one thing I didn't say. It was, you know, a lot of people, you know, myself included, view the lake as, as kind of the crown jewel of the town. And to me, what better way to enhance it as a crown jewel and to activate it with people living on it, with a beautiful restaurant and walk, you know, space on there. So even from just a youth standpoint, you know, I think we're, R and D was, was great, would have been great for, you know, tax base and stuff, but if we're just talking about the lake, you know, to me, this is, this is a better use of that space than you know, basically everything other than taking it by eminent domain, which, you know, we're not the people with the purse strings, but I don't think, you know, the town's going to pay $25 million for this. So, yeah, I think it's just a great use of, of where that is too.
Thanks, Greg.
So, so what? All right, just, just one minute. So it, in comparison, just look at the office park in comparison to what's proposed here. I mean, that's a blight, basically, on the view that this is not going to be. Just think about looking at this and then look at the, and while you're walking by or driving by, look at the office park and tell me it's a wonderful place.
Certain tenants notwithstanding. But I would agree, yeah. So everyone else has had their say and chance to speak. Covered a lot of the points I would also make, this hearing was opened last April. We've heard a lot of information, a lot of time has gone into designing and planning a lot of aspects. We've heard from a lot of town boards and the Friends of Lake Quanapawat, the butter. We said, let's, let's get all the information. And then we'll see where we are, right? And we'll have this discussion. If you remember back early on too, I think it was in May, we asked for the, the client to review the, the relief and the special permit criteria. And so Brian took us through that. And I think if I can summarize Brian correctly, if my memory serves, it was very little relief required for this project in terms of variances or setbacks or any of that parking, so you know, and, and yes, it could be a lot more units, given the size of the site, but I'm happy that it's no more than it is now. But, you know, they, in terms of relief, they don't really need much, if memory serves, right? When you look at, and this is, I think, where we have to make sure we're comfortable with, is applying the special permit criteria, right? Is this appropriate for the site? Is it allowed? Undo traffic congestion? Is it desirable? Will it overload any public water sewage drainage, right? Will it impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts? More subjective, right? And that's what we have to weigh all this against, right? All the information, all the design information and the massing and so forth. But if there's any of the aspects of the special permit criteria that people don't feel the project as it's currently presented, they're comfortable proceeding, then we should hone in on those aspects. You know, getting all this information and all these studies. Yes, with some conditions and things that might still need to play out. But I, I haven't seen anything so far that would say, okay, now we got to here. Now we're going to talk about, you know, lopping off a story of every building or taking a building away, because these units have to come way down. The traffic, I think, was the big one for me. And I just, again, there's concerns. But as long as there's a condition in there that would help mitigate any sort of future improvements at the major intersections, I think it can be accommodated and our town engineer seems confident of that as well. So I, I, I've gone, I've come a long way myself. I think we need to, to get into some more details, but at this point, I'm, I'm not convinced that this project needs to be scaled back in any significant way to, for me to feel comfortable applying the special permit criteria. So with that, anyone else have any comment or questions? Board members? You can hear me right, it's awful quiet.
We can.
Oh, you're still there, okay. It was very quiet.
Yeah, I think for the first time we all spoke and gave our opinion, so. So I think, I think we're pretty good. I mean, I, 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 I'm appreciative of everybody's thoughts and you know, I, I, I wonder if, Mr. Chairman, it makes any sense to, now, I won't go there, because I, I think they hear us and do make changes, so I think you know, maybe looking at that quarter mile of, of building as Tom puts it, or the backside of 128, dressing that up, we've talked about that in a number of projects, they can do that on their own without a subcommittee or something like that, because they've, they've often taken our thoughts and, and done it. So I don't think we need to get involved, I think they've heard us and, and can look at the aspects we're talking about.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, board members, at this time, I will open up the public testimony. If you have a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and I'll call on you in order and we will go from there. So the first hand I see is Margaret Cop.
Thank you, Chairman.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, sure. My name is Margaret Copey.
Oh, Copey, sorry, completely butchered.
It's a hard one, I don't.
Yeah. Your address?
President of the Friends of Lake Quanapawat.
Okay.
And I went to, thank you for letting me speak tonight. In May of 2021, after months of discussion, the Friends of Lake Quanapawat entered into a memorandum of understanding with Cabot, Cabot and Forbes that followed their planning process for the redevelopment of 200, 400 Quanapawat Parkway. Our agreement with CCNF focused on reasonable building dimensions, setbacks, conservation, water quality, contributions, contributions and access to an enhanced and useful park area. Our MOU agreement is an endorsement of particular limits of the proposed project with the goal of benefiting Lake Quanapawat. That being said, FOLQ supports the proposed plans that include at maximum two, three-story buildings nearest to Lake Quanapawat and one four-story building, including a parking garage nearest to Route 1, I-95, 128. FOLQ endorses a lively community discussion on the remaining elements to be decided by the ZBA on this very important project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing one of the hands being raised, we'll close it to public testimony for the evening. Okay. Homework for next time. So the materials at the building department, I haven't had a chance to go down there yet, so I will do that. So we can circle back if anyone has any comments on materials. Lighting signage amenities, I think we're going to drill down on amenities and maybe start to look at OEM and, yeah, courtyard details we got tonight, I'm looking at the punch list from January, I mean, from, uh, the December meeting.
Did I mention that? No, quick?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, Brian, did you say that there is now a, a key that's down at Gail's office?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so I think there were so many materials, it was really hard to figure out what went where.
Yeah.
So now it's like a chart, uh, Amy, that points to where, where the building, the particular material will go, so you can match it up.
Okay, thanks.
And the presentation we saw tonight, like the others, will be posted on the town's website right after this hearing. Brian will work with you, McDonald and, yeah.
Yeah, Matt, can you make sure you send that in, please?
Well, there.
Yep, I think team's been good about that, appreciate it and for, for the members of the public who want to keep up, but maybe can't attend. Um, because it does, it did show the, the references in there as well, so for anyone else. All right, does that sound like a plan for next time? And I still, we still have several points to, um, sort of drill into a little more detail.
Little, little, one thing I'd like to add, Dave, is that I'm not sure whether all the lighting that's going to go on this project has been shown. Uh, and I was reminded of this when I looked at the lighting along the drive, basically going around the whole project. And it's just a bunch of cans sitting up there. So I, I, I don't know that they've submitted us anything at this point. There may be some, maybe not complete, but I would like to see what's intended uh, around the drive that's a little less commercial and a little more residential. And that probably goes for every, all the lighting, but I, I just bring it up here at this moment as a homework.
We can provide that at the next meeting. Um, there's also, for reference in the interim, there is, uh, in the civil plans, there should be a landing sheet, but we'll, we'll go through that in detail at the next meeting as well.
Okay. The lighting and then drilling into the interior amenities, the restaurant, the amenities in the building, as you heard earlier. Get into that, what else is reasonable for next time?
Mister Chair, is it too early to ask for a building schedule? Like how long this thing is gonna? They stop the finish. That reasonable, is that too early?
We can start working on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it would probably be more rough timeframes, right? Yeah. Your mo building, yeah, as opposed to a specific date and a full out, like can chart of every activity, right? But at least, yeah. Um, so we know it's a, it's a two-year period, two and a half, three, you know, what's the timeframe roughly, yeah, shaping up.
And, and I guess in that context, I would also like to think about, are they waiting, you know, how they see leasing activity? What sort of level of complexity do they start looking for occupancies? Are they going to go building by building or the whole thing? To Joe's point, like what do, you know, what does this now look like? How, how are we, how do they perceive moving forward with it?
Well, I want to make sure we've at least gotten through all the different, like lighting, signage.
Yeah, no, 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 but that's.
Draft and start drafting an O and M maybe till we see the operation because it sounds like there's several aspects to be considered there, right? Um, so maybe, so I, we've got some things, we'll see how many we can tick off next time. Brian and team, based on what your team can get through.
Yeah. We're studying on this one.
Pardon?
Do we want an actual, like, not just what the lights are, but an actual lighting study or lighting, what do you call it? Yeah, because it, it seems like we're just talking about the lights themselves, but.
Photometrics.
Yeah, there we go, photometrics.
Yeah, need one.
Yeah.
So we, we can absolutely walk through that at the next meeting, we, we did a photometric study for this, so we, we can provide that.
Awesome, thanks.
Do we have a, um, peer review for that type of thing with the lake being right there, or how does that work?
So photo, I don't know, Amy, if you've been around one with had a real big photometrics, but it shows you how far the light will come out, what sort of pollution there is, all, all to the zero point, so.
Yeah, I have seen them, I just.
Yeah.
You just. I'm curious because I don't remember ever doing one close to water. Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cut out a little bit, but yes.
Um, no, I didn't, I remember doing them in the past for some bigger projects, I just don't remember doing anything near water.
Well, we just like, it would just be like if there's a neighbor's house, the water would be neighbor's house. As long as the water, you're not coming out on it, you're not reflecting off of it.
Okay. Thanks.
I think, they'll, they'll, they'll tell you if you're right, I think that's a good point.
Okay.
Dark skies driven.
Yes, very much so.
Yes, I was, you beat me to it, yeah. Yeah, so certainly that should be a, a major design consideration here, uh, with all of it, yep. Um, okay, so at the very, um, lighting details and internal amenities for next time. And I would say, Brian, if the team, you know, I listed several things that are on sort of the punch list, but I would say if, ready with anything else, we can cover it, otherwise that's at least a couple of topics to get to, I don't know what else is going to be on our agenda for February ninth, other than the two other continues, but, um, does that sound good, or does anyone else want to see, try to get to something else?
Mi- Mister Chairman, just so you know, I'm not here February.
Of course, they're heads up, yep.
Nor, nor will I be zooming in.
No, no.
I will be in Austria.
Yeah, so right now, we're still, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the signup sheets, everyone's, um, only Joe missed one hearing in August, he, um, caught up and is fine. You haven't missed any, so you would still stay on this as long as you catch up, because I see a few more meetings at least. But yeah, the whole voting board is still on this, um, yeah, Amy, you missed the very first one actually, but you're caught up, so. Yeah, Chip, this would be your first time missing, so you're okay. I just want to make sure we're maintaining a full voting quorum and if we need to go, um, bring in, you know, an alternate for vote that they, that we acknowledge that and know that going in. But anyway, that's where we are. Um, okay, sounds like we have a plan for next time.
Dave, quick one, just, you know, you mentioned the town engineer and you've heard the traffic. You don't need an answer tonight, but it'd be good to know what that process would look like from our point of view if we're thinking about a condition for, to address any future traffic impacts.
Yep. Absolutely. Will you get his input? I mean, again, when it gets to that point, assuming it gets to that point, there'd be a drafting of a decision and it would be a, a, um, collaboration, we would get the input. Um, you know, and even when Brian typically drafts the, the, uh, conditions that we review, um, we'll make sure, Brian, we'll make sure we reach out to the various boards and town engineer. Um, because I think there were a couple maybe that he brought up and we'll make sure we get the right language in there. And by then, I think we've got to have a dollar amount in mind as well, Tom, right? By then.
And, and town council usually looks at that also, Mister.
I was gonna say.
He usually does, I, I usually always want to buy him.
Yep, so we will definitely get there, all right? Anything else, board members? If not, can entertain a motion to continue to February ninth?
I move that we continue this project to February ninth.
Any second. Stay here, oh, okay.
Sorry, I couldn't come off mute.
Any discussion?
That's unusual.
I know.
No discussion, all right, um, voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes, all right. Thanks, Tim, for the updates, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You. Okay, moving around a long, um, oh, actually, I was reminded while we were proceeding into this hearing that when we recontinued Crescent Commons development earlier on in the meeting, there was another aspect to that, that we also, um, needed to extend the, the time, uh, for the board to render a decision, right, Brian? So we've got that letter, I, I failed to read it in at the same time. So the board members, um, in addition to continuing the hearing itself, which we did to February ninth, the petitioners, um, um, sent us also a letter dated today to confirm, as we discussed and agreed and voted on your meeting tonight, that the applicant and the board agree that the time to conduct the public hearing for the comprehensive permit is extended to March eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And the board will also have forty days after the termination of the public hearing to render a decision. So, um, at this time, again, I apologize for not doing it early in case anyone was here for that, uh, specifically, but I would entertain a motion, um, uh, to extend the hearing to March eleventh.
I move that we continue the hearing to March eleventh.
For the extent.
No, it says to be extended to March eleventh, right?
The, the, the public hearing, yes, continued to March eleven. Um, thank you, and seconded, thank you, Amy, any discussion on that motion? All right, regular voting members, Chip?
Uh, yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, so again, thank you for catching that, apologize for not, uh, doing it sooner. But that is now done and that, um, public hearing is continued to March. All right, moving on. So now we have a continued hearing mixed with a new hearing, uh, at thirty-four Payon Boulevard, uh, case twenty-two dash ten was a special permit that was continued from a previous hearing. It is now combined with a new hearing, twenty-two dash thirty-three, uh, which is an application for variance related to the, uh, proposed, uh, accessory apartment at this address. So with that, Brian, I assume we will take both up at the same time. Yes, I would request a consolidation. Yes, so whenever you're ready, please take it away.
Great, thank you, Mister Chair, uh, for the record, attorney Brian McGrail representing, uh, Christopher McShane and Nicole McShane. Uh, they are the owners of the property at, uh, thirty-four Payon Boulevard. Um, I believe they're here tonight and Nicole's brother, John Nemirovsky, is, I believe, on the Zoom. Um, he has an emotional interest, but not, uh, a direct interest, uh, because his mom, uh, Diane, uh, I'm sorry, Eileen, uh, Nemirovsky is, is, uh, Nicole's mom also. So John and Nicole are siblings and their mom is going to live with Nicole and her husband Chris, that's the desire. So I, I leaned Nemirovsky would be the occupant of the in-law and she is a mother of Nicole, one of the owners with her husband Chris at the property at thirty-four Payon Boulevard. Um, so this has been before the board for a while. Um, I got involved recently at the request of the McChains, uh, to try to advance this because there was some confusion at the time of filing. Um, and at the end of the day, um, we had to hold off because, um, there was a determination that, um, a, uh, variance was also needed, um, for this. So, um, uh, basically, um, the property is situated at thirty-four Payon Boulevard. Um, and it's a fairly straightforward, um, special permit for accessory apartment. Um, as you'll see when we go through, uh, the plans, um, this actually meets the requirements of the three hundred feet and twenty-five percent, like some recent ones have it. Um, and I think it's a relatively modest in-law apartment, they just want to finish the attached garage, which is part of the dwelling and make it the in-law for Eileen to be able to live, uh, with her daughter. So I think probably the best thing to start with would be to show plans. So this is the, I submitted plans, they've now been stamped, I'll email these to Gail after the meeting, uh, they've been stamped by a civil engineer. Um, and this is the, um, this is the main floor of the house in its, in its existing condition. Um, and you can see the garage is the area, as you'll see in the last plan, where they're proposing to put the three hundred sixty-five square foot, uh, in our apartment for Eileen. Um, these are the calculations, um, which I'm sure you're interested in. So the, this total first floor is fourteen hundred eighty-eight square feet. The second floor, which we'll get to, is one oh four eight. Um, the third floor is six ten and then the lower level is one oh, uh, four eight for a total of forty-one ninety-four. At three sixty-five, it's well under the twenty-five percent limit. So it meets that requirement, yet it's over the three hundred square foot requirement that is the minimum size. So it, it meets all of the parameters of the requirements of an accessory apartment. So the second floor, there's nothing changing, it's the main house. Third floor is finished with eaves and nothing's changing up there and nothing's changing in the basement. Uh, as I said, it's fairly straightforward, the only thing that is happening is this then goes back to the first floor and it shows how the in-law is going to fit where the existing garage is. Might help, um, if I. Second. This is the house, so that might be helpful to the board. It's on a cul-de-sac and you can kind of see how the garage fits in the house, so that's where the in-law will go. Fit right in. Now, there's another component to this, um, that I mentioned that we've asked for, uh, a variant, uh, variance. Um, there is a provision in the, um, you know, I, I think maybe, maybe Mister Chair, probably I'll get to that, I think what I'll do if it's okay with you is go through the standards of the special permit for the accessory unit. And, and then I'll eventually get to, um, the requirement of the variance and that way I don't have to backtrack. Is that okay? Yes, it is, so. The first requirement under one ninety twenty-two is that section states that it is a specific purpose and intent to allow accessory apartments within one family properties, except for there's an enforceable deed covenant that prohibits, that is not a circumstance here. They have no knowledge of that, um, to, uh, the paragraph two states that the, the accessory apartment on the lot and which it will locate it must meet the minimum lot area in the minimum lot with requirements of the zone. So that is what we're seeking a variance from. I will show you. McShane property is on Pingon Boulevard, it is lot ten on this plan, the original subdivision plan. Um, it goes back to nineteen forty-seven and it does not meet the current front, yeah, uh, lot frontage. It only has, uh, uh, basically, um, almost sixty feet, but it does not have the hundred foot requirement, nor does it meet the minimum lot area of twelve thousand, it's, it's ten thousand seven hundred and twenty. Common, very common, back when these lots were created, it met the requirements and then obviously now it's a legal non-conforming, single-family dwelling. But, you know, under that bylaw, you know, it says that you have to meet, uh, the lot area and lot requirements of the applicable zone. So, um, so we're seeking a variance from that requirement, par, uh, section two or paragraph two, under, under the, um, under the bylaw. Uh, next requirement requires the owners of the one-family lot upon, upon which the accessory apartment is located to occupy at least one of the dwelling units on the premises, which obviously Nicole and her husband Chris are going to do. Um, and then if there's a change in ownership or a change in residence of the owner or death, um, uh, the family member is no longer occupying, um, then that special permit becomes void and within ninety days, uh, the, the kitchen has to be removed. So, um, this paragraph requires you wanted to file a declaration of restrictive covenants, which we will do, we always do, at the registry of deeds in the event the special permit, uh, were granted. So that way, uh, purchases of, of the property know that they would have to go back to the board, uh, for a new special permit if they wanted to continue the, uh, the accessory apartment. And if they met the qualifications of, of a, a family member. Uh, the next requirement states that special permit shall be issued on a yearly basis. Um, my clients acknowledge that, um, and, uh, basically it also contemplates a bond or surety. Um, and traditionally the board allows, uh, an acknowledgement letter, uh, to be sent on a, a yearly basis, um, instead of filing some type of bond assuring, so that's what we would, would request here. Uh, number five requires the accessory apartment has to be located in the principal dwelling, which, you know, it's not an accessory building, it's going to be in the dwelling as you saw. Um, the, number six requires the minimum floor size for the accessory apartment to be three hundred square feet. This meets the requirement at three sixty-five, but it cannot exceed twenty-five percent of the habitable area unless the board deems it warranted, and this does not exceed the twenty-five percent meets that requirement. Um, paragraph seven states the accessory apartment shall not involve the extension or enlargement of the principal dwelling, which is not happening here. And lastly, paragraph eight states, excuse me, that no more than one accessory apartment for a total of two should be permitted on one lot and obviously that, that, uh, requirement is being met. So, um, I think with the variance, which because it's a legal non-conforming lot, uh, there's plenty of room in the driveway to park. Um, I think I would respectfully suggest, um, because of the uniqueness of, uh, the non-conforming lot with the lack of frontage in the area, um, in, um, in conjunction with a special permit for accessory apartments. For that purpose, I think the variance. For that purpose, I think the variance respectfully suggests the variance will be warranted. So we would request the variance and the special permit. Happen to answer any questions?
Members?
Comments, questions?
Seems seems totally responsible and I don't think anybody would have picked up on the lot size. So they're coming forward with all the right things. So it's fine with me.
Mr. Chair, I have one quick question and I'll start it with I have no problem with this. So it's not going that direction, but I feel like when people ask questions, it's always because they have problems with something. But Brian, more from a because we seem to be getting more of these. What is the, or even is there a definition to habitable area? We seem to be getting more that are changing the garage. Which would change the calculation. I know I I don't, I don't know if there's a problem with this one, but I know the last one there was a problem because they problem that actually would have helped them. They didn't do the calculations right because they they didn't put habitable area. They didn't include the garage's habitable area in the, you know, in the the percentage calculation. So just do we, is there like, is a, and more so, you know, from a garage standpoint, or is this unfinished basement habitable area? Yeah, maybe that's something to discuss in in another.
Yeah, I struggle.
When it matters, but I mean, is there an intention between the difference in use of habitable area and principal dwelling?
The by law doesn't define it.
No, but the but the building, but the building permit, the building.
Inspector.
Code, the building code does define habitable area. So I think you go back to that, like, for instance, if you had space in an attic and part of it basically was a sloped roof. You can't count anything below like four feet. Even though the room might be wide, might be go into that four foot area, you can't count it as habitable space.
But for these purposes, the garage doesn't matter for these purposes.
Okay, Jim, do you think, and Greg, I think it's a great question. I do because I struggle with that.
Yeah, and it just seems, and maybe there wasn't, maybe it's shoddy drafting that was there an intentionally using habitable area in principal dwelling? Do they just interchange the two like by accident or was that on purpose?
Yeah, I I I I struggle with it. So I I respect the question. I think it's a really good question and and you know, I don't know the answer. I mean, Jim, what are your thoughts on it? I mean, you know?
No, I I think this 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 is part of the habitable space. All right. And but you know, the basement's habitable space. All right. It it there are a number of triggers within the building code. That basically define this. If you've got a deck and you've got a roof over it, you know, and it's got a basement out of whatever, basically, a bunch of bunch of things that basically trigger it. So even though it's not defined within zoning, it is defined within the building code.
So a garage would be habitable, Jim?
Yep.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
And honestly, even if it wasn't, I would feel comfortable.
So I Greg, I'm glad you brought it up because I struggle with that every time I look at this because you know, and and I think I think what they meant is the plain meaning. If you know, if if it's occupied, you can store stuff in it. It's it's habitable area.
Well, yeah, that's I mean, my garage is certainly not habitable tonight. So that's why it's you know, it's it's just really, yeah, that's and that's really why I thought of it. So I was like, oh, the garage, I can't really live in there.
Not until your wife ships you out.
But then, but then you change it to habitable, obviously. But yeah, okay, that's that's fine for tonight.
So Brian, you said you had these stamp lines you'll send. I also the plot you showed with the lot area. I didn't see it in the application with the variance. We probably should have that because that is the nature of the variance.
Yep, I want to forward these right to you and Dale right now.
Okay, just so we have that in the file as part of the record. I mean, sometimes we get a full-on plot plan, but in this case, at least something that shows or represents what the lot is today, you know. Not much you can do about it. It is what it is and it was legally. It it's legal non-conforming now, but yep.
So I have no problem. I just emailed it. Thank you.
So yeah, I have no problem. It's face meets the criteria for a special permit. And you know, the variance, again, we've heard different applications that need a variance for different reasons. This is owing to something they really can't control. They're not adding to the building. They're not doing anything that it's, you know, a question about hardship. It's just the lot is what it is. So but it is the right thing to do to get the variance along with the permit in this case. So I have no problem with it. Anyone else, board members?
Procedurally, Mr. Chairman, is it a vote on both at the same time? Or do we give the variance and then allow that to happen? Or do we have to allow it to happen and then give the variance? Is it two votes or one?
Two votes.
Which comes first? Chicken or the egg? Brian, thoughts?
It would usually make the variance because you really can't give the special permit without having the variance that deals with the problem for the special permit.
But we're allowing the variance to
It's all in the same decision anyway. So does it really even matter?
No, it'll be two decisions, Greg. I have to file separate applications.
Oh, you have to file. Yeah. Oh, because you, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they'll refer to each, they'd refer to each other. So it's that always be
So we give the variance to allow a in-law apartment to
Go on. You just give a variance from the requirements of of from the requirements of one ninety twenty-two A one F two, which says accessory apartments may be created only within the single family dwelling located on lots, meeting the minimum lot area with requirement. So it will be a variance from that requirement of the by law to allow a spec to allow a special permit to be granted, notwithstanding non-compliance with that section.
Yep. And then having voted on that, we could then grant the rest of the permit because
Because you gave the special permit first, you really can't give it because we we don't have a variance and we don't meet that requirement.
Right.
All right, before we go there, we could hear from other town boards, the fire department, Concom, they had no objections or issues for the record. Any public testimony, if anyone has a comment or question about this application, we will entertain that at this time. Please just raise your hand in the Zoom call. Seeing no hands, we'll close with the public testimony. So if there's nothing else, I'm ready for
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant a variance to allow a in-law apartment on a lot that is legally non-conforming. So that under the article that was just stated in the discussion. So that they can then have an in-law apartment.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All right, regular voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe? Joe? And I vote yes. Okay, so now the special room.
I move that we I move that we grant the special permit to allow an in-law apartment at thirty-four Payon. In accordance with the plans that were presented to us this evening. Given that there was just a variance created for the lot size and that they meet all the other requirements.
Second.
Do any discussion on that motion? All right, same voting members, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yeah. All right, so that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Good luck.
Good luck.
Yeah, I think Nicole Nicole is here. Nicole, you here?
Oh, there she is. Okay. Good luck. I'm sure they're happy to.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, are you on the next one now or is that, are you done? Okay. Do we have, Brian, before you leave, is there anything under other matters that weren't anticipated prior to this that we should cover? So I think the next one's our last one for the evening.
No.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Jim, there's nothing, right?
Well, I I I could report on a walkthrough yesterday, but that doesn't need you. That doesn't need you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Have a good night, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, our next new hearing, twenty-two dash thirty-four, Inc., at one oh three Albion Street.
Hello? Hello? Hi, yeah, this is Matt Murphy from Hobby Bunker.
Hello, Matt.
How you doing? Yeah, I'm not sure. I guess I've been waiting. Not your fault, I guess the guy Bob Sardella, I don't know if he provided any information to you guys or not.
Yeah, I'm here, Matt.
Oh, you are, bud?
Yeah, I have all sketches to show them here.
Right. And I know this went before the design review board. So Mr. McCain might chime in as well, but Bob, if you've got a plan, you can just propose what you're going to do. I think there's some sign aspects here and what you're looking for here is from this point is specifically on the bracket sign, but there's other signage being proposed, right? For this business. So Jim, I assume we want to go through it all and then hone in on.
No, you don't have to go through it all. They have, back in March, basically, we had a design review meeting. And we approved basically the window signage and the wall signage. They have a permit. It's installed. What they what they've only got to at this point is the bracket sign and they need a special permit for that. The board, the board is fine with the design. It's just that they have taken their, taken time basically to finally get around to ask for a special permit. As we know, the it's compliant, it's just because of the way the code's written, it has to come before the zoning board for special permit. The board recommends approval at this point with what's shown here by Bob.
Okay, well, thanks, Jim. All right. So we just focus on what's been applied to. That's the bracket sign board members. So so Bob, if you just want to take us through the proposal and the design here?
Sure. The the sign itself is made from a PVC substrate. There's there is going to be dimensional aspects to where you can see by the side that this raised sections on it, letters and that sort of ribbon banding on it there. It's two-sided, of course, and it's it's done with all the company colors branding of his business. The bracket itself is the exact same bracket we used on two previous projecting signs, one being the Albion Cultural Exchange as well as pride storage. And the bracket has an integrated lighting fixture in it as well. And we will, I don't have the Kelvin number that's for the lighting, the light itself, but we will be doing the exact same stats as on the other two signs that we had done. One up on the cultural exchange.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it. It's within the size, you know, like Jim said, it was gone over by the sign review board and all and met all the criteria there and it there's a spot on the buildings you can see there by the frontage there. It's a perfect spot for especially if you're coming from North Ave up Albion Street where you'd see his building on the left. You don't see the letters that that spell out Hobby Bunker on the face of this. That projecting sign is really, you know, an important piece for him to get the the amount of exposure he can, especially coming up from North Ave.
Okay, that makes sense.
And that's pretty much it there on that when it comes to the sign itself. I don't know what else there may be that I can answer about it.
I should note that this was the old, I guess, May tag, was it?
LAR.
Yeah. There was a huge sign on the roof, which has been taken down as part of this project. As it's as new person has moved in. So like I said, we 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 at the design review board are very happy with this.
No, and I'm happy to hear it's it's a consistent design. And like you said, Bob, same product is down the street. So we get a little bit of continuity there. Along this along this corridor that's being redeveloped, obviously, and part of a larger streetscape in town. So
Right.
I'm happy to hear that. Okay, fine with me. Board members, anything?
I just love to see another hobby hobby shop in there. That was the best place as a kid AAA. So it's cool that it's another one. But I like the sign because that's what we're talking about.
I think my only comment would be the lighting itself is assuming it's going to be off at night. So it's only going to be on store hours at, you know. Is there far as lighting goes, they actually just put one of the new streetlights literally like right outside my front door. So I'm not even sure if I'm gonna need to light it up at all. But otherwise it would be off, obviously, ten o'clock or so. Right, it would only be on, yeah, during business hours. Yeah, I'm fine with the sun.
Anyone else? Okay. Open it up to public testimony. If there is a member of the public who's here. This is a question, make a comment, please raise your hand on the Zoom call. We'll call on you at this time. See, no hands, we'll close with the public testimony.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant Hobby Bunker the right to put a projected wall sign on the building as presented to us this evening.
Second.
Just to clarify, we're granting him not the right, but a special permit.
Granting the special permit. Sorry.
No.
Which gives him the right.
The the right via a special permit.
There we go. We got it now. As long as the word special permit. Okay.
I forgot you're writing this one.
Yeah. Any discussion on the motion? All right, regular voting members, Chip?
No.
Yes.
Not regular voting members. I'm off.
Oh, that's right. You, oh, great. We should have stated that upfront. That's the under this review board. So um, top. Mr. Lucy, you prepared to vote?
Yep, I'm prepared to vote.
So voting members then, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Um. Yes.
So that is unanimous. All right. You've got your special permit.
Thank you.
Bracket sign.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your patience. We just take them in order as you
Great.
This is early, though. Okay, all right.
Usually it's midnight.
It's done.
All right, so that was approved. All right, board, any board comments, clerk comments? Any any ongoing?
Yes.
Projects or discussions? Go ahead, Jim.
I report that yesterday Amy and I went to Harvard Mills and walked the site to look to take really count of planting. I thought it was going to be a waste of time and actually it wasn't. So Amy and her hound dog routine basically counted up all the plants. Confirmed basically with a super what we had on each side, including in the courtyard. There are, there was substitution. They're going to come back to the board, basically. There was some substitution of, what was it?
I mean, roadies.
Roadies, roadies for what was it?
Hayberry.
Hayberry, yes. So they look fine. Everything looks healthy, but I'm a little concerned going in so late that we're going to have some death come spring. They they probably are ninety-five or greater at the building itself, even the parking garage. But in the parking lot behind, we did not review it. It's not ready. It may be ready in the next few weeks, depending on how many feet of snow we get. And but the plants are there. They just haven't been installed at this point. And there's a lot of lilies and other things were difficult to see. So we might have to go out basically in the spring and check that all of that's there because those things are all died back at this point. So but other than that, it was it was worth it to see what they've got. A lot of hardscape still to do, though.
Okay, yeah, they would. I remember back in like whatever October, November, they were targeting the end of the year. Sounds like they. Didn't quite.
Yeah, they're rough.
But as long as happy to see boundary open more often than not, even though they technically opened it up by Labor Day and the kids went back to school. It kept closing again, as you probably noticed. So. Which is disgusting, but if. You know, that's what was being needed for safety reasons or whatever. But anyway, all right. Thanks for the update, Jim and Amy. Anything else?
Oh, I had a question, actually. I drove by the Molee's building and saw all the red Xs. Any word on that?
What's our inside scoop there, Gail?
Yes, well, it doesn't have. All right, the fire department puts the X on because it's considered an unsafe building. So if there's a fire, they're not going to go in it. This weekend, the sprinkle, there's no sprinklers and the pipes froze and everything burned. Today, the WMGLD shut off the electric gas, pulled all the meters. It's a mess. And so. The owner of the building and his attorney are meeting. With town officials Wednesday at one to discuss. What their intentions are with the building.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody, fire, building, Steve. WMGLD, everyone's meeting with them. So.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thanks for the update. Yeah, I mean, people see that and they think, oh, gee, they're finally developing the site, but you know, maybe. But not.
No, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, they got to deal with what's going on currently. Yeah. Okay, well, look forward to something that that block, obviously, everyone knows just. It's it's needed redevelopment for some time. Okay. Anything else, board members?
Do we know what's going on with Tarrant Lane? I drive by there quite a bit and it sure looks like a construction site.
Have they pulled a permit?
I mean, it's.
Knock the houses down.
Save a demo.
They've done a hell of a lot more than knock houses down. There's land moved, there's big piles of. Of land throughout. They've dug. Pretty much.
But they don't need a permit for any of that.
Right, that's actually considered landscaping.
Yeah, they can. They can move all the earth they want and even create a big hill over there if they want to.
Okay, and because the origin I was thinking, I thought we heard too that. They sold the property. And if they did, they need, we're supposed to be notified per forty B. I don't, I I'm not sure if there's a timeframe, but if they don't notify us, then. The permits revoked.
I think he brought another partner on, so I think.
That's probably what they did, yeah.
But I'm not.
Brought some money.
Hmm.
Okay. And we received correspondence, just for everyone's awareness, I think. Gail was notified. She let me know that Greenwood Station was the other forty B that was approved about the same time, two years ago. That they still intend to proceed, but need to maybe looking for an extension on their permit. So they still. Sounds like want to do something, but they so Gail, did you? Get back to them?
I reached out to him, letting to hear back.
Okay, so maybe one of our upcoming agendas, it'll be under other matters to potentially hear that and. There's some discussion. Extend that one. Okay.
The the project across from Mel Farbs is in Four Corners. They're pouring foundations over there.
They are moving.
Slowly.
They're pouring frozen concrete.
They do like a couple pieces of rebar. I drive by every day. They have like one guy doing by himself putting nails in.
Yeah, maybe it'll pick up in the spring, but yeah, it's interesting, but. Just glad to see something moving on it. It's been a while, so. Anything else, board members?
Nope.
Would it be appropriate to approve the minutes at this time, Mr. Chairman?
It would be. I just want to make sure everyone's had an opportunity to share comments and. Updates.
I would like to move that we approve the comments so well written for January twelfth meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can we approve the minutes rather than the comments people made?
The minutes. Thanks.
All right. All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so good job, Gail.
Thank you.
Okay, so till February ninth, gang.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Chip?
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Um.
Yep.
Yes.
I vote yes. We're in a German. Thank you for your time.